If you get them from my phone, it doesn't, I guess. But a lot of that's more when it's like quickie.
The Tuesday, March 5th, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city council offers an open podium invitation. That's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. And this happens prior to each regular council meeting. Typically, the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Tonight, we have a wonderful donation really to receive here, which we just are always thrilled when we have these opportunities. So Chief, would you come on up? Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good evening. It's a great pleasure to come before you tonight and offer up this resolution to accept the donation for $14,895 from our Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund. But there's another layer that I wanted to share with you. In the beginning years or the early years of the Eden Prairie Police Department, we had a canine program and a very, very generous veterinarian that would take care of those dogs, Dr. John Wright. When Dr. Wright passed away back in 2016, his family made a very, very generous donation to the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund with the specific direction that it be earmarked for our canine program. And we have some of Dr. Wright's family members here tonight. Doug Wright, Lucy Mattson, and their sister Amy Krabinoff could not be here this evening. But I think financially, it's a great donation for the city, but symbolically, I think it's important to recognize that we appreciate that support from both the Wright family and the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund.
Thank you. Any questions, council? We do need a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the donation.
I would move to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of $14,895 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund for the purchase of a new police canine.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really a wonderful donation. Really appreciate this. Every two years, the city brings in a vendor. In this case, it was National Research Center to conduct a survey of our residents, our citizens. And we use the survey to make decisions going forward. We have some, I find really exciting news this year for the results that were presented to us in a workshop prior to this meeting downstairs for about an hour. Morgan Adams is here from National Research Center, and Morgan has an abbreviated report to present out to the public now on TV and to the people in the audience. So Morgan, welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. Thank you so much for having me. As mentioned, my name is Morgan Adams, and I'm from the National Research Center. I'm a research associate there, and I was the project manager this year, so I'm very happy to be here to present your results to you. So in general, this presentation is going to be a summary of the detailed info that can be found in your report, so I'm going to go over some of those key findings, and we'll get moving. So first, I want to talk a little bit about the survey methodology that we used. We sent out a scientific random sample to 2,000 households here in Eden Prairie, and each household received three mailings. The first was a pre-notification postcard to let residents know that the survey would be arriving in the mail, and then that was followed by two survey packets a week apart. In those packets, we included not only the survey, but also a cover letter detailing what we were doing and encouraging participation. It also included a URL link where residents could go and take this survey online. We had 494 completed surveys from these efforts. We also offered a separate online survey to all Eden Prairie residents, and we had about 1,500 respondents to that survey. After some detailed analysis, we were able to combine those two, and we got a total of 1,994 responses. This gives us a 2% margin of error around the results. We weighted all of this data back to the census norms to ensure that we were getting all residents in the proportions that they're present in the community and to ensure that everyone has a voice. We also compared these results to three sets of benchmarks. The first was a national database that has over 600 communities in it. The second was a smattering of communities that have populations that are over 15,000 in the north central region of the United States. And then finally, we compared your results to other Minnesota communities. So before we get into the key findings, I just want to go over in general how we matched up here in Eden Prairie. We ask a set of questions on the survey where we can provide generalized comparisons across communities, and so we call these our benchmarks. It's important to kind of give that context because we're never going to have people rate fire services and code enforcement the same way, so we really want to compare apples to apples and those exact services across communities. And I also want to mention that we actually make it fairly difficult to be higher or lower than the benchmark. For your average to be considered higher or lower, there needs to be at least 10 points in between the rating that was given in Eden Prairie and the national average. When we're looking at ratings that are much higher or much lower, then there's at least a 20-point spread between those two averages. As you can see here, we consolidated many of the community characteristics here in Eden Prairie. The column on the left are all those that are higher, so at least 10 points higher than those averages. And then the others were similar. Now, I'm going to go through the benchmarks in more detail as we're going along, but I do want to note that none of the items in Eden Prairie were rated lower than the benchmarks. So when we're looking at more specificity, the regions, we're going to see more similarities because those are communities that are facing the same issues and challenges that you are. As you can see here, when we're looking at those regional benchmarks of communities in the north central area, we have traffic flow, ease of car, public transit, things of those nature that tend to be similar instead of higher. And then again, when we're looking at Minnesota communities, we tend to be a little bit more similar, but you can see there's still overwhelming number that are higher than other Minnesota We did the same thing for government and city services. We looked at these overall. There were 24 comparisons that were available. Compared to the national benchmarks, 21 of these 24 were higher or much higher. Then again, when we're looking at the regional, there were only six that were similar where all the rest were higher, and these included things like drinking water and utility billing that tended to be more similar to the region. And finally, in Minnesota, we had 22 comparisons, and 14 of those were higher than the benchmarks. It's also noteworthy that 22 of these comparisons were ranked number one across all communities in Minnesota.
And Morgan, you mentioned downstairs that an item like fire services, even though it may look like, we have an amazing fire department here, it may look like our people are not as pleased or at least equally pleased, but you mentioned that in terms of fire services, everyone rates them really high. And so we're at 96%.
96%.
Very difficult to get a significant increase above anybody else.
Yes, yeah. Fire services are one of those things that people tend to rate high as a general rule, and so it can be almost impossible to be higher in certain circumstances.
It can't be 10% higher than 96%.
No.
Wait a minute. This is Eden Prairie, though.
106.
So as I mentioned, this presentation is really kind of summarized around those key findings, and the first one was that residents feel Eden Prairie is a desirable place to live and to raise a family. Nearly all survey respondents gave excellent or good scores to the community as an overall quality of life, and this was higher than all three sets of benchmark communities and has remained stable over time. A similar proportion gave positive assessments to the community as a place to live and to their neighborhoods specifically as places to live. Marks for places to live in Eden Prairie were higher than all of the benchmarks and similar to past administrations. So for aspects that enhance quality of life, residents were also pleased. We had 94% give excellent or good ratings to the overall image or reputation of Eden Prairie, and about 2/3 stated the same about as a place to retire and to the sense of community, and ratings for the overall image were higher than all benchmarks. A similar proportion were pleased with the community as a place to raise children and for the overall educational opportunities that are here in the community, and these were all exceeded ratings elsewhere and were also consistent with past years. So in one question on the survey, we asked residents to write in their own responses, what they thought was the best thing about living in Eden Prairie. We had 35% state a response that was similar to open space, parks, and trails. 17% were pleased with the convenience of the location, and then about 1 in 10 felt the same way about schools, and they felt safe in the community. So not only do residents think highly of their community as a place to live, but they also praise safety services. All of these services have remained consistent over time, and fire services, fire response, EMS response, as well as police services and crime prevention, were highly rated by at least nine and 10. It's worth noting that the police and crime prevention were ranked 10th in the nation out of 460 and 363 communities respectively. We also had 87% state that they felt positively about emergency preparedness services, which was third in the country out of 279 and similar to 2016. It's really no surprise that a majority of residents feel that they are safe in the community overall. And they also feel safe in specific areas within the community, and this includes things not only like their neighborhoods, which makes more sense, but also in places that may make most people feel more uncomfortable. So people are still feeling safe in the retail parking lots, the paths and walking trails around the community, in parks and open space, and in the mall. And these were also stable over time. We did ask residents about their perceptions about various issues and whether or not they were a problem here in Eden Prairie. We had about 30% of residents state that traffic speeding might be an issue, as well as about 2 in 10 stating that things like property crimes, drugs, stop sign violations, identity theft, things like that, might be a major moderate or extreme problem. We did see some slight increases here on perceptions of problems for drugs and youth crime, and those have increased over time, but were fairly similar from 2016 to 2014. So that's really where we're seeing the jump is this year.
Morgan, just clarification. This is again, it's not actual numbers. This is the survey numbers, a perception number, so I just want to make sure the audience doesn't confuse with the actual numbers.
Correct. Yes, this is a perception of residents regarding these problems. These aren't crime stats that are more reliable, and this is really meant to kind of feed into that data rather than replace it.
And actually, our actual data shows more flat or decreasing.
Yes, right. Exactly. Yeah. So we might approach this more from an education-type standpoint rather than any kind of need in the community for approaching these problems. So the parks, recreation, and natural environment are highlights in Eden Prairie. 95% stated that the overall natural environment was excellent or good, and this outranked all of your peers and was seventh out of 278 communities across the nation. More than 9 in 10 also applauded each aspect related to parks and recreation, including the overall appearance, air quality, cleanliness, fitness, and recreational opportunities, et cetera. Each of these outmatched all of their Minnesota and regional comparisons and also tended to be much higher than national comparisons. So we're seeing at least a 20-point spread there. Residents did report higher awareness or participation in events like the Staring Lake Concert Series, the Fourth of July Celebration. 7 in 10 also stated that they were aware or participated in movies or arts in the park, theater productions, and Night to Unite. It's also noteworthy that in the first ever event for People Fest, we still had 4 in 10 that stated that they had participated or were familiar. Similarly, a large percentage of people stated that they were participating in the amenities that were offered to them. We had at least 8 in 10 say that they had used both smaller and larger community parks, and 2/3 had used the community center. We had about 4 in 10 that stated they had used the amphitheater or the outdoor center. With slightly fewer stating that they had used the conservation area, art center, the observatory, or the senior center. However, rates for use in the conservation area did increase since 2016. And considering the rates of use, it really should be no surprise that each of these amenities were also rated as excellent or good by at least 9 in 10. So this question, we asked residents about their familiarity and whether or not they had participated in the Sustainable Eden Prairie program. This is the first time we've asked this question on the survey. We had 8% stated that they were familiar and had participated, whereas 2 in 10 were familiar and would consider participating. Further, there were 45% of residents that stated that they might not be familiar with the program itself but would consider participating, and only 2 in 10 were not familiar and were not interested in being involved. So as a follow-up question, we asked those that were interested at least in participating, what kind of services that they would be willing to do. 8 in 10 stated that they would be willing to reduce their solid waste or energy consumption and the water conservation, and 2/3 stated that they would use native landscaping to help protect the environment. So residents are also very pleased with their city services. At least 9 in 10 gave rave reviews to the overall quality of services here in Eden Prairie. And this was ranked eighth in the nation out of 429 communities and was also higher than all sets of benchmarks. Residents also felt positively about the value of services that are provided to them for the taxes that are paid. These eclipsed all benchmark comparisons and were similar to 2016, but we did see a jump from 2014 to 2018. We asked residents to rate 33 individual city services that are provided to them. This is just a sample here of those services. We had of these 33 services, 12 of them were viewed as excellent or good by at least 9 in 10. Further, another 16 were rated highly by 8 in 10 residents, so we only had a few that even fell below the 8 in 10 range. And then we also had of these services, 18 of them were in the top 10 of our database across the nation. 70% said they had contacted the city, and they had done so through the community center, police, recreation, and general information most often. They were also asked to rate the city employee on that interaction, and we found that 93% were pleased with the overall customer service that were provided to them as well as to the courtesy, knowledge, responsiveness, and follow-up that they received in this interaction. And the overall customer service was higher than all benchmarks. And our final conclusion is that the economy is doing very well. A number of ratings within economy were higher or much higher than benchmarks, with 9 in 10 awarding excellent or good reviews to the overall economic health and the community as a place to work, and 8 in 10 felt similarly about economic development and 3/4 about the community as a place to visit. Eden Prairie as a place to work was ranked third in the nation out of 361 and were much higher than comparisons. So in conclusion, our main takeaway is from the 2018 results, where the community continues to be a desirable place to live and to raise a family. Safety services certainly contribute to the quality of life here. Parks, recreation, and natural environment are highly appreciated. Residents also praised their city services. And the economy shines. With that, I'd be happy to take any additional questions that you might have.
Counsel? Again? Oh.
No questions. No questions, but I just, you know, I mean, thank you for doing the survey and just a great, great, great result, and I just want to thank all of our city staff for making us shine so well as a city. I think they owe, we owe a big debt to our city staff that do such a great job in yielding these results, so thanks to staff.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Brad, I want to add that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Similar thing what Brad was saying. It's really exciting to be sitting here and be part of one of the resident and hearing this great news, and the point I hear is we are consistently above kind of national average and our peers. Also, what I hear was we are better than previous years as well.
Yes, we didn't have any downward trends from 2016 to 2018. Everything was either consistent or higher.
And now the hard job is to keep up with the higher.
Yes.
And the last point is, just want to highlight, like I was saying in the downstairs, the beauty of Eden Prairie is we are very high rating in terms of residential survey, we had a high rating in terms of business survey, and we are one of the third lowest tax rate in terms of neighboring cities. I'll talk with her, I think, like Brad said, the staff and city council members, everybody did a great job. Thank you for the survey.
Absolutely. Happy to be here. Give you good news.
Thank you. Counsel member Nelson.
We also plan to keep the city going this way, too. We've made a commitment to the residents and the businesses of this city, and we plan to keep going in this rate and hope that everything will be just the same as it's been two years from now as it is now.
Counsel member Freiber.
I just want to interject. One thing you just said, that we had no trends downward.
Right.
I mean, that's exciting when you think of all the categories, and I think that's the part that really hit me. Thank you.
Absolutely. Especially with the high ratings that you've got, seeing those remain stable over time is definitely an achievement.
So, somebody's phone. So Morgan, thank you for all the work you've done, and appreciate National Research Center helping us out. I just want to make a comment, too, to all of us and to piggyback on top of what all of you have said, that we are standing constantly on the shoulders of all the council members that have come before us, really, really over the last 50 years. I mean, it really goes back in, actually, I guess if my math is right, it's, well, it's 50, it's with the guide plan, the master guide plan from 1968, really, that started this. And I think a survey like this coming from our residents who we represent, represents for us a validation of all of the decision-making that came before us, but also that our plans and our goals that we're on track. So we appreciate the work you've done, but we also, as I echo everyone else, that the work that former councils and current staff are doing, we appreciate that. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, next on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and are there any items that anyone wishes to add to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the following city, oh, no, sorry. Move to approve the agenda.
Great. Sarah second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Let's put the two minutes into one motion unless, let me ask you, anybody have any parts of either minutes that they want to question or to change or tweak, add, edit? Anybody? Is there a motion to approve both of the meetings' council minutes?
Move to approve the council minutes and city community council workshop minutes.
Go ahead and add the city council meeting in there, too. Or did you put them both in one? Oh, you didn't put.
City council meeting held Tuesday, February 19, and city council held Tuesday, February 19.
Perfect. Sarah second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Consent, let's see, we have no reports of advisory boards and commissions. Consent calendar. Anyone have any items they'd like to question? You can have it pulled. We could just temporarily talk about, anybody have any concerns? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to discuss item L.
F?
Was it, is it L? Go with me here a second. Nope. It's the St. Croix Recreation. Which letter am I here?
L.
L. I am L. Okay. Sorry. I just have a question on that. If someone can help me possibly, if I can address this to Mr. Lofheimer there, if he can help me out a second. What, it's a fair amount of money, and what I'd like to just know is, is equipment when we replace like this, does it just go, does it go from a safety standpoint that right now maybe this equipment is not safe? Or is it just we going on a year? Because I believe they have like a 15-year span, they say, and I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
Yeah, you know, there's some generalities in numbers of years that these wear or are safe to use. Some of them, it's due to, at some of our major parks that get a lot of use, they tend to be more into that 12 to 15. Some of the other neighborhood parks, sometimes they can go 15 to 20 years. So those are just guidelines. We do every year have playground safety inspections, and that happens on every piece of play equipment. So we have a really good feel on a, certainly on an every year, if not even multiple times during, especially that summertime, on the quality, the safety, and just the reliability of those pieces of equipment. So we use the CIP to program dollars for future years and base the replacement schedule. So these are actually three different play structures that are at three different parks. So you can't really divide them by three because Nesbit, being a little bit bigger park, is a little more than 1/3 of that 160, and the other two bluffs, West 1 and 2, are a little less than 1/3 of those pricing. So it seems like a high number, but it's actually three different parks and three different play structures.
So am I right in assuming, though, right at this present point, there's not a safety aspect to it? It's more of a preventative, that it's getting towards the end of its time?
Yeah, and in some cases, we may have pulled some of the pieces out if they can't be fixed at the time or taken them offline, but it is a, it is a time to take these out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Lofheimer, we see the listing out in our 10-year CIP whenever we have that brought to the council. When's the next planned time that we'll get the opportunity as a council to take a look at that list again?
Yeah, so we are, this year is a budget year, next year being a CIP year, the following year, and then that looks out at that 10-year timeframe. At any time, we have our list. In some cases, they reorder a little bit. One might hop in front of the other, but we've had quite a bit of replacement over the last five to 10 years, so in terms of volume, it'll slow down a little bit, but certainly when you get to a large park, that number increases as well. you get to a large park, it, that number increases as well.
Mr. Getchel, would it not be a good idea to, since we have two new council members, and the three of us don't have that list memorized, that just to send out maybe in an attachment in the next couple of weeks or something, that we can just take a peek at it again? Because ideally, not that we can't always, and I appreciate your questioning, I mean, not that we can't always question any line item, budget item as it comes before us, but ideally, we've seen it as a council many, many times, so when these items come before us, we've had the chance in former councils to take a peek and kind of not sign off on the specific dollar amounts, but at least sign off on the concept that we're going to be replacing among our many neighborhood parks. This is going to be a constant, Mr. Luthammer, is it three or four possibly a year, or three or four every couple of years or something? It's a regular occurrence, correct? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Freiber, for your question. Any other items? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval of item A to M on the consent calendar.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Mr. Getchel, we move on then to our first, is that our only and only public hearing tonight?
It is, Mayor and Council. Our only public hearing is, it's an annual event. We receive on an annual basis dollars from the federal government, community development block grant dollars annually, as, you know, somewhat of a pass-through that the city can then allocate for low-to-moderate income person services to benefit them. So, this year, and again, we have to hold a public hearing before those funds are allocated at the city council level, and, and so we're estimating, conservatively, we're estimating, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in, in grant funding and a hundred thousand dollars in our program income funds to make three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of allocations of the CDBG dollars in the coming year. If those numbers change, I think I say this every year, we would have to adjust the allocation, and we haven't had to do that in, in a long time, but it's just something that, that I want to note. I know there's different areas in housing activities, for instance, that the city manages those housing projects, first-time home buyer, the home rehab loans, we administer those projects, so we have some flexibility with the city and maybe not having a negative impact on our social service agencies. But that being said, we do have recommended funding by our Human Services Review Committee for Prop, as you can see, in three different areas, and, and housing support, emergency vehicle repair, and childcare, and then for our home program through senior community services for household and outside maintenance, and those programs have been funded in the past through CDBG funds as well as all of the housing programs that I mentioned. So, we'd ask that you hold a public hearing and pass a resolution with the supporting these allocations that the committee recommends, and staff can certainly answer any questions you may have on these CDBG funds.
Counsel? Counsel, before I open it up to the public, any questions or comments you wish to make at this point?
I'm just trying to remember, what was the allocation last year? Was it three-hundred-and-twenty thousand of CDBG funds that we received last year? Was it the same amount?
Your Honor, Councilmember Aho, my recollection is that we estimated two-forty last year when we came to this group as opposed to the, excuse me, must have been three-forty instead of three-twenty total, or I'm just remembering a portion of it and not the income, program income. I think that's what I'm recalling, is that the CDBG allocation was two-forty, but then we always have program income as well. Does that sound about right, Jean Karschnian, the audience there? Thank you.
So, two-forty versus two-twenty?
Versus two-twenty this year.
Okay, so it's pretty close to the same amount. Thank you. I was trying to remember.
Counsel, anything else? Let's open it up, and this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on the issue of the 2019 CDBG fund resolution? State your name and your address.
My name is Deb Taylor. I'm the CEO of Senior Community Services, and Senior Community Services has a small admin office in Minnetonka, and we have some office space in the senior center here as well. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the home program. We help older people remain in their community, we help them live with dignity, and to reimagine aging. For example, Janice wants to stay in her own neighborhood in Eden Prairie, which is no surprise after hearing the results of that survey that you just had. Yeah, she doesn't want to be segregated into senior housing, she doesn't want to be segregated into an assisted living, she wants to live in her neighborhood with people of all ages. She loves her neighborhood, and she's been living in her neighborhood for decades. But while in good health, she struggles with keeping up with her household chores. Before, she used to shovel her sidewalks, shovel her driveway, and this year, there's been enough of that, right? Before, she used to climb a step ladder and change light bulbs. Before, she used to get down on the floor and scrub her floors. But now, she lives on a fixed income, especially since her husband passed away a couple of years ago, and she can physically no longer do these chores. Well, you've heard me say "community" a few times. We have "community" in our name, and we have "community" as a value, but we also take "community" to another level. We hire people in the community, in the city of Eden Prairie, to do the work, we recruit volunteers in the community to do the spring and fall yard cleanup here. We just hired a handyman last fall from Eden Prairie, he fixes leaky faucets, he does minor carpentry, he changes light bulbs and furnace filters, along with other handyman jobs. We have a staff of cleaning folks that help with laundry. You might know that as you get older and you're trying to walk down the stairs with a laundry basket, that can be kind of tricky sometimes, so we help with laundry, we help with the cleaning, we help with grocery shopping. We have several volunteer groups that help Eden Prairie residents with spring and fall yard cleanup, and we provide these crucial services for Janice and for people over sixty in Eden Prairie. We serve all income levels, but two-thirds of the people that we serve are unable to pay the full cost of the service, and so we provide these services on a sliding fee scale based on the ability of the homeowner or the person in their apartment, based on their ability to pay. Janice tells us that she's able to live in her home and to be a good neighbor because of Senior Community Services. But I say that Janice is able to do that because of our partnerships with our communities, communities like the city of Eden Prairie. So, I want to say thank you for your past support, and I look forward to partnering with you again in 2019.
Thank you, Deb. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Government can't do everything, and so we need partners, so we so appreciate all the work that organizations like yours does, so thank you.
Could I put one little plug in?
Please.
Okay, so, the snow is going away, it's going to, believe me, it's, it's going to happen.
By June or July.
We've seen it before.
Yeah, she did not say a date.
But it's time for spring to come and time for a handyman to come in and help out with some minor repairs, perhaps some help with cleaning, so for folks in the audience that are sixty and older and looking for those services, I would say call our home program at nine-five-two-seven-six-seven-four-zero-four-six, and thank you.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
By the way, it's great surveys. I'm just curious, how many residents in Eden Prairie that you're serving?
We serve, I can give you the amount that we've served the last few years, and it's been, 2017 was thirty-three, eighteen were estimated to serve thirty-five, and for this next funding, thirty-eight. We provide quite a number of hours of services for those folks. They're typically folks that are older and perhaps more frail.
So, it's costing around eight to nine-hundred dollars per residence?
Right.
If I can account, looking at the numbers here.
Right, and if you take the hours of service and then divide that by the money, it, it's a win-win for both of us.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Because that's not their only source of money. Mr. Getchel, can, do we typically on our website avail our website like to nonprofits? Deb just gave a number in case someone didn't get that, can they access that off a website?
We have, we have links.
Links, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on the CDBG
Good evening. I'm Janet Palmer with Prop Food Shelf, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight because these CDBG funds are very critical to Prop's work that we do. As you may know, we're much more than your local food shelf. We have many services to help financially for families that are really in crisis and to get them stable. Last year, we helped over eighty families avert eviction, and about a quarter of that was the use of the CDBG funds, so it's, it's a large portion of what we do. Additionally, over twenty families, again, just with these CDBG funds, were used in our transportation program, our car repair program, which the intent of that is to get the car fixed so people can get to work and keep their jobs. So, it's, again, critical use. It's not easy right now, it's, it's tough with higher rents and losing low-income housing. It's, it's a struggle for these families, but yet, with the survey that was shown earlier, these families want to stay in the community, and they want their kids in the school district, so we're working really hard with these families. But together with the city and Prop working together, we do make a significant difference. It means a lot. So, I thank you tonight for your previous support with these block grant funds, because again, it, it makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, what a great organization Prop is, and we are so lucky in our community to have it. Anyone else that would like to address the council on the CDBG funding? Which, by the way, we've used that a lot, is community development block grant funds that come out of the federal government. Anybody? All right, counsel, in your motion, it does not actually say to close the public hearing, if you want to add that, and then if somebody would make a motion.
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the use of 2019 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Review Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
I think Councilmember Nelson got in under the wire. Any additional discussion, conversation? All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Great. Payment of claims, is there a motion? Oh, let me ask first, we can make the motion, but let me just ask you, any, any items within the payment of claims that you'd like, that you noticed and you'd like to ask a question about? All right, not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the approval of payment of claim as submitted.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiber?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. We could not do what we do as a city council, or at least do it as well, if we didn't have the tremendous support of residents that have, over the years, volunteered their time to serve on our commissions, and we view our commissions not just as work groups, which I think they are in, in a, in a big regard, but they're also advisory, very much so. We often will place, or try to place, experts on these commissions that are much more knowledgeable about certain areas than we are. We're all citizen government, we have our strengths to sit here, but we don't know everything. As you all know, we don't know everything, so our commissioners are just tremendous support for us. So, tonight, we're really excited to do our appointments. We went through a process, people applied, we did an interview process, the council listened to many candidates. We were able to place a vast majority of, of people on these commissions, but some we were not able to place. We would recommend that anyone that did not get appointed, please, 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 stay involved. Often during the year, a commissioner will resign and will have to go back, or will go back to sometimes the list of applicants to find someone to place, and then, of course, there's next year. So, with that, I think what we'll do is clump the appointments to the commission in a big motion, and PG, if you'd like to start with the Conservation Commission, we'll go down the line and make the motion.
Move to appoint the Conservation Commission, Deb Jodi, Divedi, Genie Senat, Senatis, I hope I didn't mispronounce that badly, Priya Santhikumar with the term ending March thirty-first, 2022, and Joanne McQuire and Aaron Pook with the term ending March thirty-first, 2021.
And move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commissioner, Daniel Keely with the term ending March thirty-first, 2022, and?
And move to appoint to the Heritage Preservation Committee, Valerie Ross, Pamela Spera, and Cheryl Kessler with terms ending March thirty-first, 2022, and?
Move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, Sharom Masagi, Leslie Filman, Tyler Amen, and Philip Skye with terms ending March thirty-first, 2022, and Sana Alasar and Assad Alaway with terms ending March thirty-first, 2021, and?
PG? Move, move to appoint the Park and the Creation and Natural Resources Commission, Kirk Sprecher, Kim Harris, Kenneth Rose with the term ending March thirty-first, 2022, and?
Move to appoint to the Planning Commission, Ann Higgins and Balu Iyer with terms ending March thirty-first, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Great, welcome. We, again, we're so thankful to our commissioners, and we welcome them, some of them back, they've been incumbents that we reappointed, but many new ones, so we're thrilled to have you. We also need to appoint the chairs and the vice chairs, these appointments are made annually following the appointment of the commissioners, and we, in some cases, are reappointing, in some cases, new chairs and vice chairs. Why don't we start, let's see, let's start here, I think we ended, so Kathy, if you want to start with the first motion?
Move to appoint Anna Anderson Chair and Kate Loan's Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Move to appoint Keith Scholl Chair and Bob Barker Vice Chair of the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission.
Move to appoint Steve Olson Chair and Tara Kalar Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission.
Move to appoint Gregory Leeper Chair and Sharom Masagi Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
Move to appoint Larry Link Chair and Patrice Erickson Vice Chair of the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission.
And move to appoint Andrew Piper Chair and Ed Farr Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes unanimously. Again, we appreciate all of our commissioners, but the chairs and vice chairs especially also for the extra work that they do and the leadership that they provide, so thank you. Do we have anything else to come before the council this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. If you're a student here and you had to be here, you kind of lucked out, this is a shorter one, so congratulations. Feel free to come up and chat with any of us if you want to learn a little bit more, or if you just want to go home, I understand. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Meeting adjourned.